It's too nice. We need to start with a roll call.
Alderman Parker. Alderman Pulis.
Here.
Alderman Geenan.
Present.
Alderman Clark, absent. Alderman Hurt.
Here.
Alderman Spaghettius.
Present.
Alderwoman Swanson.
Here.
Mayor Tombs.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Stand for the pledge allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right. Public comment. We have three people that has signed up at this point. One, the first one is Terry Elliott. Is Terry here? Would you mind coming up and let us know what's on your mind? Talking about sewer backup. If you need to lower that microphone, feel free to.
I just wanted to bring something to the attention of the city. My sewer has been backing up since January and
Could you please move the microphone?
And I kept trying to get a hold of, I called Mr. O'Brien three times and he just told me it was my line and not the city's line. So my first sewer backup was in January. Estimate cleanup was $800. I can't afford that, so my son-in-law cleaned it. I notified Mr. O'Brien that he's, and he stated that there is nothing wrong with the main line. It had been checked and flow was fine. It was my line that was plugged. The backup would come and go each time finding tampons and baby wipes. If my line was plugged, they would not have gotten into my basement. I can't pay $800 every time it backed up. I called Mr. O'Brien three times and was told the same thing, my line, not the city's. He acted like I was bothering him. Called Mr. Ruder on 21619. The smell was awful. It would come up into my heater vents. The odor was so bad at times we needed to leave the house. Mr. Ruder cleaned my line. I now have more sludge in my basement and unable to pay for the cleanup. I was hospitalized on February 24th with pneumonia, but I'm not able to prove that that's why. This has my whole house smelling and basement full of people's sewage. It was a helpless and frustrating and anxious time. Sewer gas and all of the other gases are toxic and I couldn't do anything about it and the city wouldn't. I called Peterson Plumbing, unable to open the line going out 100 feet. Pulled out tampons. State city may be blocked. Mr. O'Brien called again. City lines are patent, may need jetted. And he wanted the line scoped. First scope was done by Peterson's and for some reason that Daze was lost. So I had to have it scoped again. The line was jetted. The line is perfectly clear and intact and continues to back up. Peterson's came out three times. I left a detailed message with Mr. O'Brien and he did not respond. A realtor gave me Nate Hartman's name. I spoke with him and that day they were digging. I then spoke with Chris Castline and John Thorne. They continued to tell me it was my responsibility. John told me to get estimates on cleanup and replacement of water heater, which it took out a water heater, too. I had no hot water for two weeks. They would discuss at next council meeting whether they were going to pay for the damages or not. I was not waiting a month to see if the council approved cleanup after the main that was 30 feet collapsed in front of my house. The neighbor sewer also backed up. I had perfection clean my basement. Once it cleared that main, after the main was fixed and I had no more backup. Referred by Surf Pro. Peterson's replaced water heater that was damaged by now two inches of sludge and three inches of liquid. I had sewer gas and probably methane gas in my home for five months, unable to get help. The frustration and it was frustrating and unbearable. I had no control over the situation. My anxiety through the roof and my entire body would shake at times. My basement still smells heavily of sewer because it has just seeped into cracks and wood. And I sprayed bleach on my basement and coughed for three days. The sewage was permeated everywhere. It's under furnaces and not sure if I will be able to smell, get the smell out. These, these men had no regard for my health or safety. This has been the worst experience I've ever been through. And I have a picture of the sludge. And I just, I just don't understand. Oh, here it is. This is, this is what it ended up being. I have receipts for the, the jetting, the scoping, the snaking. I have not gotten the, the bill for the new water heater or the cleanup.
Well, if you want to talk to Mr. Bartels there, those were his employees you were dealing with and he'll be happy to talk to you about them. And then Mr. Thorson is sitting behind him and he'll be happy to talk to you about your claim.
Okay. And where's the first gentleman?
He's right there in the pink tie and behind him is Mr. Thorson in the jacket there. And I'm sorry you had a negative experience, but these gentlemen will take care of it for you.
Thank you. Picture back here. All right. And next is Karen. Yes.
Good evening.
Evening.
I am here with a group of people. If you'll raise your hands. We are representing the 11th Street Nonprofit Consortium. We're also known as the NPC 11. I know that a number of you have heard of us. And I'm the secretary of that organization. And we are a fledgling community action group comprised of representatives from the following organizations. The Illinois Iowa Center for Independent Living, Second Baptist Church, Martin Luther King Junior Community Center, Olivet Baptist Church, Project Now, House of Fire Ministries, Youth Hope, Center for Alcohol and Drug Services, Quad City Missing Persons Network, The Ark of the Quad Cities, Church of Peace, United Church, Friendship Manor, Community Caring Conference, and South Rock Island Township. So we all work along the 11th Street corridor and the well-being of our organizations and populations that we serve, of course hinge on the prosperity of the businesses and the residents all up and down the corridor, as does the security of our community. And so I came to the last meeting to make an appeal about the streetlights on, along the 11th Street corridor, a number of which are out, and ended up in the end part of the public comments, which was a time I couldn't be here. In the meantime, we are so pleased to learn that you've been moving on this issue and that on tonight's agenda that you are poised to perhaps approve $100,000 in motor fuel tax funds toward these lights. So we are just here to express our appreciation that you are hearing our voice and that you are moving on our behalf and, and you know, that you understand the importance of revitalizing 11th Street. So we're just here to say thank you and that's all.
Well, thank you. And we want to keep hearing your voice. So keep up the good work. That whole organization is, is great, great organization and great number of people on it. And so we support that and want to keep that corridor improving.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. We have John. And Norman? Absolutely.
Untoler. I've got some pictures here I'd like to distribute.
Sure.
I got one for each side. And then these here, you can probably pass around. There's just a quick glance of some road construction Rock Island's been doing on 38th Street. The pictures of 38th Street is all the new construction. I forgot to bring the other photos of 18th Avenue from First Street Moline to Longview. And I calculated about seven miles of total construction, which is about 84 blocks or more. And the other photos are of our 42nd Avenue off of 9th Street. If you take one block of all that new road construction and you divide it in three pieces, it would completely redo our street. Recently, I think back in February, we had a main water line break. The city came in to put a manhole in. And the manhole where they were putting it was only two to three inches of asphalt on sandy soil. There was no rock base or any, any hard pack below it. We have city garbage trucks coming down. And I've marked some of the photos where the road is humped. If you were to hump the center of 38th Street like ours is for the width, it'd probably be a foot and a half to almost two foot high in the center. But we also have poor finishing of the concrete. I've called multiple times about getting the little, I guess it's kind of a small pothole right where they did the manhole and I get no reply. I called a month ago over probably, probably since we had the manhole incident and the water line break. Every time I call Mr. Bartel, I'll get two to four days later, somebody calling me. And most of the time, I'll call you as soon as I can recording and I, I never hear from him. I think once in probably about 30 phone calls. So I really think our street needs to be resurfaced because of the poor subbase packing of just sandy soil and only two to three inches of asphalt. The city garbage trucks and other heavy tree cutting trucks that come down, it's going to keep, you know, pushing down the sides and making the center come up. It's only 12 foot wide. I mean, we, we have to go into other people's yards and driveways when you got, you know, cross, crossing traffic. But I'd probably like to see what can be done about getting the road done. And I don't think it's been resurfaced in 40 or 50 years.
Here's your chance to talk to Mr. Bartels because he's sitting right there. I, that's certainly not on the schedule for resurfacing. That's an old seal coat road. I don't know.
It's asphalt.
What's that?
It's asphalt.
Well, I think, isn't that a seal coat road, 42nd Avenue?
No. Not where they did the manhole. It's, it's definitely asphalt. You come right, as soon as you come onto the dead end street, you can see the layers of asphalt where they coated the top. And there's also one in there of 6th Street where they fixed the main water line. Instead of putting the surface back down like it was, they left it with gravel. And 6th Street, it, on, I think it's like the seventh photo after mine, it shows 6th Street coming at a curve. And when you're on 42nd Avenue coming across the railroad track, the people on 6th Avenue have just come like 20, 25 miles an hour, which is, speed limit's 15. And they think they got the right of way to go from 6th Street to 42nd Avenue. So we really need a yield sign there. The only yield sign we have is for the railroad track only.
Well, Mr. Bartel will be able to walk you through the process on that also.
Okay.
And he's right there in the pink tie.
Thank you.
All right. That's all that has signed up for the public comment at this time. There will be an opportunity at the end of our council meeting if anybody wishes to or comes in late. We are at item number six on the agenda.
Minutes of the June 24th, 2019 meeting.
Move to approve the minutes as printed.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Item number seven.
Minutes of the executive session of June 24th, 2019. Move to approve the executive session minutes.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Item eight. It's me at this point. Update. I got a couple of items here. We got Starlight Review. Lincoln Park and the city's Park and Recreation Department will continue its concert series this Tuesday, July 9th, 2019 with Generations Band. Dance lessons will start at 6:30 PM with the concert at 7:00 PM. Hy-Vee Grill will provide food and drink for purchase starting at 5:00 PM. For event status, please call 309-732-7246 in case of inclement weather. Whitewater Junction, Whitewater Junction Back to School Bash. Whitewater Junction is having a Back to School Bash on Monday, July 29th from 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM. Come enjoy the day at Whitewater Junction and join in on the full, fun-filled games and prizes. Can't believe back to school talk already. Swing, we just got out, I thought. Swing for Kids Golf Event. The city of Rock Island Parks and Recreation Department will be hosting a two club best ball tournament on Thursday, August 1st with, August 1st, 2019, with registration beginning at 3:00 PM, tee-off at 4:30 PM at Sockeye Golf Course. The cost is $65 per person and that includes 10 holes of golf, cart, drink tickets, goodie bag, and meal. And add an additional meal ticket for $20 if you want to eat. If somebody else wants to eat and not play golf. Proceeds go toward scholarships for youth and playground equipment for city facility, facilities. Registered by July 26th, 2019 at And that's all of that. Item number nine.
Presentation of the Financial Management Report for the First Quarter 2019.
They get to hear my voice for a few more minutes tonight. So tonight we're presenting the First Quarter Financial Management Report. A little late this year. Normally we do this in June, right before the audit, but time got away from us. So for the new council members, this will become old hat for you, but I'll take a little bit of extra time and just explain some of the schedules. We have five schedules to review as part of our financial management report. And the first one is our revenues, expenditures, and net position report. And it's two pages. And the first page is devoted to our governmental funds. The second page will be our enterprise funds fiduciary and component units. Each page has revenues and expenditures, both our budget and actual. Gives you an idea of the percentage to budget and overall results along with the last column of cash available in that fund. So we do practice fund accounting here at the city of Rock Island. First page governmental funds. Governmental funds are those funds that are mostly supported by taxes of various natures. Not in all cases. We do have some charges for services for some items. When we're looking at first quarter reports where our target percentage is 25%, so when we look at governmental funds first quarter, it looks terrible, kind of scary, like, oh my gosh, what's going on? But first quarter has a couple of impacts. One being our property taxes do not come to us until after the first distribution from the county, which we got some last month, so that's exciting. The first of four payments was due in June. In addition, state dispersments of taxes that they collect on behalf of the city often has a lag. So, you know, for instance, businesses, say Hy-Vee, charging customers for their groceries in the month of December, they don't have to remit them to the state until January and then by the end of January, and then the state gets to fart around with them for a month or two before they pass them along to us. So there is kind of a little bit of a delay, fart being a technical accounting term, but. All right. So general fund. Want to focus on that just for a moment? So when we are looking at budget, that is a revised budget. And so there's all kinds of things that do adjust our budget. Sometimes things that you all approve. Other things are POs that get carried forward. So it might be an open purchase order from last year that, that got carried forward. But at any rate, when I am looking at these schedules, I pull up last year's, look at my notes and kind of see where were we last year and how are we doing this year compared to last year? And then of course, my last year notes have little notes about the prior years. So we are on track. General fund revenues at 15% of budget. We're usually in the 14% to 19% range, so we're in there. And last year at this time, we were exactly at 22% in that first quarter. First quarter doesn't have any holidays in it. So of course, most of our expenditures are personnel related and holidays cost us a lot of money. So we're at 22% and that's right in, right in line. Switching to the next page. Our proprietary funds. So those sometimes are referred to as enterprise funds. Those are funds that are supported by charges for services mostly. So the first three, three funds up there being utility-related funds, you can see where they're tracking the budget and right on track. Internal service funds are also proprietary funds. And so those funds service other funds of the city. Draw your attention down to the bottom row, which is the total. And again, this is all very high level in totals. We are going to dive into general fund detail by departments on the next report. But at March 31st, at that snapshot in time, we had $21,700,822 in revenue. That was 20% of the budget. Expenditures, $21,024,847, at 17% of the budget. Actual, we're actually ahead of the game, $675,975. That is better than where we were last year. Cash, citywide, not including pension fund, because those are held separately in trust, And that is about $3 million less than what we had last year at that time. Schedule two, this is general fund expenditures by department. So it just breaks down that $8 million, $8.4 million in expenditures by each of the departments that are part of the general fund. You can see in the last column that all departments were below the 25% threshold with the exception of IT. And that's just a product of their budget projects that occurred in the first quarter rather than spreading them out through, throughout the year. So everybody is on track. Third set of schedules are my favorite. And these are our state and local tax revenue analysis. So we're going to kind of walk through those and I'll be giving you some information as I see it and compare it to where we were last year. So the first is income tax. And you can see that in the first three months, we received $947,000. And that's very comparable to where we were last year, just slightly ahead. We were at $941,000. These schedules, just on a very flat line basis, project how far we are from budget. And so you have to kind of take each with a grain of salt. But basically, we're on, we're on budget at $22,000 variance from budget. In that third row, I would like to point out the second quarter looks really good. So receipts in the second quarter were much higher than prior years. And IML alerted you all to that as well. Just receipts were coming in better than expected. So that's exciting. And that's why we need to make sure we count everybody in that census because this income is distributed on a per capita basis. So we want to make sure that everybody is counted. Replacement tax, weird tax. Sometimes we call it PPRT, Personal Property Replacement Tax. This is distributed five times a year. It does look like we're way behind budget. This will be an interesting one to watch because auditors and their infinite wisdom said that we needed to change how we were reporting replacement tax. And so we have to go to a cash basis as opposed to an accrual on this one. I think we'll end up okay in the end. But this tax, when you look at it historically, is definitely declining. IML alerts us that we may need to look at replacing this. There are no, nothing in the state statute that says the state has to distribute this to us. It is kind of discretionary in nature. So last meeting, we looked at the audit. I pointed out my favorite schedules there, statistical schedules at the end. You can look and see a line on personal property replacement tax and see how it's declining over time. And we'll look at that again over, over the budget, period. And this is also, this schedule is nice. That first column, five-year average, also gives you an idea of, you know, where we've been for the past five years, the fifth year being 2018, and what we budgeted this year and where we're headed. So you can see prior years, replacement tax was much higher. Sales tax and local option sales tax, we usually talk about these together. These are both collected by the state. So businesses remit these to the state and then forward our portion on to us. The local option sales tax, a few years ago, the state did decide to start charging us for their collection efforts, even though they are collecting this already for us, which is really, really irritating. But it amounts to about $45,000 a year that they're keeping and tens of millions of dollars statewide that the state gets to keep from local municipalities. But at any rate, we are running behind budget on these. And I'm, I can't really quite say why. We, we do get some data from the state and we're getting it more frequently going forward, which is exciting. It is very confidential in nature, so you can't ask me what Hy-Vee pays in sales tax because I can't tell you. But it's not really easy to decipher. We'll see on the next slide, food and beverage sales tax is running on budget and running a little higher. So it's not restaurants. So it could be the grocery store on 7th Avenue. It's hard to say.
And it could be the weather was really tough this winter, too.
Yes. That's exactly.
There's a lot of variables.
Yep.
Real quick, I forgot the answer to this, but if you're ordering online and delivers to the Rock Island or whatever, do we get any sales, do they have to charge sales tax now? Like Amazon or whoever it is?
It's a complicated question, but with the new law that was related to the Wayfair case in North Dakota, the state chose to administer that through the use tax, which you'll see an uptick in use tax, which that's where part of that is. But then there's going to be further changes starting in 2020 where some of that might come through sales tax.
Right now, it's just going to the state?
State and distributed to us through use tax, which is not the way we want it because that's on per capita basis, too. So speaking of use tax, this is where we see some of the internet sales. Starting last September-ish, I think was our first distribution where that new law went into effect. This is a tax that continues to increase for various reasons, also including increased state efforts in collecting use tax. Like you'll know, like if you do your taxes through TurboTax, that they'll ask you lots of questions about, you know, did you purchase a vehicle and that kind of thing or a boat? And they want to make sure that we are reporting or self-reporting purchases like that. But at any rate, it's, it continued to be an uptick. It is headed above budget. So we're happy about that. Utility tax. What's going on with utility tax? Utility tax last year at this point was $651,000. So we are tracking ahead of budget. This is one that kind of goes up and down very fickle. It can relate to weather is probably a big impact. Also, competition on rates can drive, drive down utility tax. Telecom. This will probably go away in our lifetime unless there's some legislative efforts to, to change this. But it continues to decrease, although we did lower our budget. I noted last I noted last year, we budgeted eight-hundred-seventy-five thousand, so this year, we budgeted seven-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, one-hundred-thousand dollars less. So, looks like we budgeted well, and we're right on track, so that's all, all good. Food and beverage, two-hundred-and-seventeen, that's right where we were last year, so we don't see a lag in food and beverage, so maybe even with the weather being bad, Alderman Genon, we still spent money on food, I'm not surprised. But, but we also have some restaurants that are thriving in the city, so while we're lagging a little bit off a budget, that's not unusual. I expect that we'll make our nine-hundred-and-forty thousand revenue. Gaming tax. Gaming tax, last year, at this point, we were almost a hundred thousand higher, so we were at a million and seventy-six when I provided the first quarter report. This is a tax that we watch closely, and we budgeted the same amount as we did last year. Last year, if I recall, our actual receipts were four-point-three million, so we didn't miss budget a little bit last year. What do we do with that gaming tax? Well, historically, we take last year's gaming tax and, and fund next year's capital improvement plan. Much of our capital improvement plan is related to our principal and interest payments on capital-related bonds, capital-related projects that we financed with funds, so much of our gaming tax goes to principal and interest payments. With that, totals, four-point-five million, received of twenty-point-four million dollar budget. Overall, our budget is four-hundred thousand more than last year. Any questions on that one? Alright, the next two, pretty easy, so we do provide our total investments for the last eighteen months, so you have an eighteen-month history of how it's all divided up. So these are the funds in which we pay all of our, all of our bills. You can see it in graphical presentation, too, that middle bar graph, you can see where we were in November of two thousand and seventeen and where we, where we were in March of two thousand and nineteen. That bottom pie graph just provides a picture of, of what portion each of those investments are, where they are. Checking, two-point-five million, so my goal every day is to try to be between three and five million dollars in, in cash at American Bank, our checking account, you know, from approving our bills. You know, we could easily have, you know, about two and a half million for payroll, and generally, a million to two every week for accounts payable. The last schedule has our interest rates in each of those buckets, and then the bottom pie graph has our percentage of investments by institution. So you can see, by and large, most of our investments are, are local. We do have a laddered CD portfolio that we have historically had about nine million dollars there. We have backed off on having that competitive process every month, just to help with some cash flow, cash flow needs. We might switch that around going forward. The yield is in CDs right now and not so much in our US agencies and treasuries right now, unfortunately. We do try to make sure that we're below twenty percent in any one institution. We do collateralize our deposits, only two-hundred-and-fifty thousand of your deposits are FDIC-insured, so we do make sure that our collateral that's provided by each of those organizations covers the amount that we have on deposit. Any questions? Good, good, thank you.
Oh, gotta wake up.
A lot of data.
Terrible.
A lot of data.
Terrible. Alright, it is a lot to absorb. Item number ten.
A special ordinance amending Chapter Two, Article Six, Division Seven, disbanding the Sunset Marina Boaters Advisory Committee.
Move to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance.
Second. Moved in second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Spargattis.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item number eleven.
Claims, two groups, A and B, and then C and D. A, report from the Human Resources Department regarding payment in the amount of fifteen-thousand, sixty-three dollars and nineteen cents to David Morrison of Rock Island, Illinois, for legal services rendered from May thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, through June twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen. And B, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number one in the amount of seventy-one thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars to Putnam County Painting Incorporated of Mark, Illinois, for the Ridgewood Water Tower Rehabilitation Project, for services provided from May fourth through May thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen.
Move to accept the reports and authorize payment as recommended for claim items A and B.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Spargattis.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried. And C, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number twenty-one in the amount of seven-hundred-and-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-thirteen dollars and forty-four cents to Civil Constructors Incorporated of East Moline, Illinois, for the water filtration facility project, for services provided from May twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, through June twentieth, two thousand and nineteen. And D, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number five in the amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars and eighty cents to Langman Construction Incorporated of Rock Island, Illinois, for the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, and two thousand and nineteen Catch Basin and Manhole Program, for services provided from May first, two thousand and nineteen, through June eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Move to accept the reports and authorize payment as recommended for claim items C and D.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
Due to the nature of my employment, I need to recuse myself from this vote.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Spargattis.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Five eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item number twelve.
Claims for the weeks of June twenty-first through June twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen, in the amount of four-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, three-hundred-and-forty-two dollars and fifty-seven cents, and June twenty-eighth through July third, two thousand and nineteen, in the amount of three-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars and ninety-six cents, and payroll for the weeks of June seventeenth through June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, in the amount of one-million, five-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars and seventeen cents.
Move to allow the claims in the payroll.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Spargattis.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item thirteen.
Report from the Information Technology and Finance Departments regarding payment in the amount of seventeen thousand, two-hundred dollars to Harris Gems of Chicago, Illinois, for a critical middleware software update for Harris Gems, financial software used for all city budgeting and financial reporting.
Move to accept the report and authorize payment as recommended, and authorize the city manager to sign the scope of work for support services to assist the update.
Second. Moved in second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Spargattis.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item number thirteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Report from the Police Department regarding a one-year contract with the Rock Island-Meyland School District for the services of the school resource officer for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year.
Move to approve the contract as recommended, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 We need to do a roll call. Apologize.
My fault.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Spargattis.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item fifteen.
Report from the Police Department regarding a one-year contract with the Rock Island-Meyland School District for the services of the High School Resource Officer for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year.
Move to approve the contract as recommended, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Spargattis.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item sixteen. Did I do it wrong?
No, I'm sorry. It's me, man. Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding an ordinance amending Chapter Seven of the Code of Ordinances relating to the Housing Code, nuisances, and refuse.
Move to approve the proposed revisions to Chapter Seven as recommended, and consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance.
Second.
Moved in second. Do you need a, any discussion? Roy, we do need a roll call on this.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Spargattis.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item seventeen.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding an ordinance amending Chapter Thirteen of the Code of Ordinances relating to solid waste.
Move to approve the proposed revisions to Chapter Thirteen as recommended, and consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Spargattis.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item eighteen.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding a resolution appropriating one-hundred-thousand dollars of motor fuel tax funds for the Eleventh Street, US sixty-seven, street lighting repairs.
Move to adopt the resolution as recommended.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? I don't know who you're for this. It's a little dark down here. Can I ask real quick, when did I hope to start that? Okay. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Spargattis.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item nineteen.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding a resolution accepting a grant of forty thousand dollars from the Illinois Housing Development Authority for abandoned residential properties.
Move to adopt the resolution as recommended, authorize the mayor, city manager, and city clerk to sign the certificate of incumbency, and authorize the city manager to sign any future agreement subject to minor attorney modifications.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
Is this essentially a grant for demolition? Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Spargattis.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty.
Report from the Traffic Engineering Committee regarding a request from Jeff Whitaker, Principal of Rock Island High School, for the installation of handicap parking spaces in front of the Rocky Field House from six PM to six AM, where the bus stop is located on Twenty-Fifth Avenue.
Move to approve the installation of two handicap parking spaces as recommended, with the city paying for labor and equipment, and Rock Island High School paying for materials, and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Spargattis.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-one.
Report from the city clerk regarding a request from Alan Shea of CCKMA for a date change for their sound amplification permit from June twenty-second to Saturday, September seventh, two thousand and nineteen, from six PM to ten PM at Sunset Marina due to extreme flooding.
Move to approve the request as recommended.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Spargattis.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-two.
Report from the city clerk regarding requests from Anthony Scanyers for a street closing of Ninth Street between Fifth Avenue and Seventh Avenue on Friday, August sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and Saturday, August seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, from eleven AM to ten PM for the Jazz and Heritage Festival with sound amplification to be held at the Martin Luther King Junior Park.
Move to approve the request as recommended.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Spargattis.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Alright, item twenty-three is other businesses. Nobody else has signed up to speak, so, nothing there, how about this council here? I got a couple things, I guess, real quick, because I don't think we've had a council meeting, but I think the flags look great, the pride flags lining the street, I think they got good compliments, and people saw those out there, so I think that was well-received and worth it.
And the grand opening for Clock Inc., the day after that chase came, was extremely well-attended by staff and by the community. I think it was one of the largest openings we've had this year. So thank you to all who are behind this idea that we are welcoming and inclusive.
Yep, exactly. And I know on, on Face or an email or something like that, I did get a compliment on the Rock Island flags, coming off Centennial Bridge and that sort of thing. People are noticing those and complimenting the look, the look there. And so, thank you, I know Randy, you had part in that, appreciate that. Also, I guess I'll bring up just a letter here, and I won't read the whole thing, because sometimes I goof things up when I read them, but, trying to make light of things. But, but this person was very complimentary of a number of departments, various departments throughout City Hall. And, and so I just wanted to make sure, because sometimes we always hear the negatives, that sort of thing, but complimented in Public Works, Luke, and Mike Bartels, and regarding some problems that there was there in an alley, a nuisance and that sort of thing and problems. Complimented Chris also about property problems in the neighborhood, so, Chris Brown. And so I just, I guess I'm bringing this up that, just because it's, we don't hear enough compliments, and so I'm continuing. And so I'm continuing. There's been others, but I thought I'd bring this up. She also talked about the expense deals, but we've hashed that enough, so I won't bring that up. Also, I had the pleasure today of Rock Island School System, Rock Island Myland School System, get it correctly. Has 40, about 40 new employees starting this year, teachers, social workers, administration, et cetera. But they invited me to be a tour guide on the bus and take them around Rock Island and Myland, and that was a joy. I really had a lot of fun doing that. Great group of people. Spent some time with the superintendent. He's got a great super, the new one, great sense of humor. So we had fun with that, but got a chance to, once again, show off. Some of the people don't live in the Quad Cities. They're moving here. Some people live in the Iowa side. Some people already live in the city. Just a combination of people, but, but it was a good, good way. And I think it's good for us to continue to, to bond and collaborate with the school system, as we saw even earlier with ordinances and that sort of thing. So that was, that was great. I think, I don't know if you mentioned it, but tonight was the first night we televised the study session. We're handing that as a separate entity, a separate program that will be put out in the web, YouTube, and, and that sort of thing. So it'd be two separate programs out there to watch for now. We'll do this in the future. Be, once again, it'd be transparent to the, to the citizens. And then the letter. So that's, I think, at this point, the only comments that I have. Is there anybody else's?
July 8th marks the beginning of a national recognition called the National Week of Summer Learning. Our own Angela and the library staff works in deep partnership with Spring Forward. Thursday is a big event at the I Wireless Center, or the Tax Layer Center, excuse me. Last year, we marked as one of the top three locations throughout the country that had the most students gathered to celebrate that as a community in the Quad Cities, we, we support students learning in the summer. That was organized by a nonprofit located in Rock Island, and they're planning to do that again with 48 or 50 vendors throughout the, the Tax Layer Center, including our library handing up. Are you handing out books this year again? And so it's another good thing that things are happening, that we are a caring community. And if you're around, or if you happen to be thinking on Thursday, think of the kids who are learning, and it's because of our Parks Department, because of our library, because of our nonprofits that we support as a community, and we support through our CIP budget, and that we support in our personal donations. So thank you, Angela and your staff.
Any other comments? Hear none. We have item 24.
Executive Session, 5 ILCS 120, Section 2, C2, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives. 5 ILCS 120, Section 2, C12, the establishment of reserves or settlement of claims as provided in the Local Governmental and Governmental Employees Tort Immunity Act. If otherwise, the disposition of a claim or potential claim might be prejudiced or the review or discussion of claims, loss or risk management information, records, data, advice, or communications from or with respect to any insurer of the public body or any intergovernmental risk management association or self-insurance pool of which the public body is a member. And 5 ILCS 120, Section 2, C21, discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed under this act, whether for purposes of approval by the body of the minutes or semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated by Section 2.06.
Motion to go into closed session for the exception cited.
Second. Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Poulis.
Aye.
Genon.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
You know, I'm going to throw in a quick one to the park board for the 4th of July or 3rd of July, but the fireworks, park board did an outstanding job putting on a party down there. It was well organized. They worked hard, so thank you for doing that.